First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Could I have a member? Steve Dillabah, secondary. Mark Beckwood. Thank you. Are there any disclosure of pecuniary interest or the general nature thereof? Oh, I'm sorry, we have to call the motion. We have a motion on the table? All in favor? Okay, right. Thank you. And now we go to three. Disclosure of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof. Am I hearing any?
None.
Hear none, thank you. Now, we have a delegation tonight. It's Heather and Chris Abrams. They were with us on the 27th of November, I believe, and gave a presentation. I believe this is an update to that, am I correct?
I suppose so, yeah. We're supposed to get a report or receive a report from the... Whether you're going to cover the...
Okay, well...
...report back from your staff.
Okay, that is... That's an information item and it's on our action information, which is next. So I was under the impression we had a delegation from you, so...
So you want me to speak to that?
Well, okay. That would be fine.
Thank you for having us, you have seen me. So the last... We were here, you were waiting for a report from your staff regarding the coverage of sewer costs or backup that happened at our home. My understanding that the report is indicating to not recommend covering the costs. Sorry, I can never say.
Okay. Take your time.
So, in the notes from what I read from the website today, it says that the township will take necessary action to reestablish flow in the sewer main. We were out of our home for more than three weeks. And I'm wondering if you consider that a reasonable time frame for necessary action?
Just a second. So you may not realize or understand the actual... What has actually happened. We've had two sewer backups at our property, starting back in 2016 in February. We were told that following day that they didn't want to open up the street due to the fact that impending snowstorm. We said, "No problem, we understand that." They paid for the snake and drain and cambered, which is... Which Morseburg Plumbing comes through and automatically build directly to the township. They said they would come back and fix it. Over two and a half years later, it happened a second time without the township coming back to fix. So then we took it upon ourselves to talk to the mayor. And Mr. Deschamps was there at that time. And during the conversation, the mayor had stated that, "You know the township. Everything is delayed, delayed, delayed." Well, two and a half years to fix that sewer backup is quite a delay. We wouldn't be standing here today looking to receive the cleanup cost of $600 and some dollars if the township had have come back and done their job to begin with and fixed it the first time. It took them two and a half years and a second backup. And now they don't want to cover this. This is all that's pending that's gone on.
Sorry?
Sir, anything else?
What we're looking for now is a repair. We did the right thing and repaid the NAPMHA bill.
Good project.
To financial detriment to ourselves. I have a voice here that says it was paid in full. In writing, I have an email from Ms. McKinster on October 10th. That says, "We suggest you move back into your home. After a week or so of normal usage, the township will pay Morseburg Plumbing to re-camera the line to ensure that everything is functioning properly. If there are any problems identified, the township will take necessary action and also have the camera work done again until we can get a good handle on what's happening." So if you told me in writing that you will repeatedly cover the cost of Morseburg Plumbing if necessary, I don't understand how you won't cover the cost of NAPMHA... Or, sorry, NAP construction. Pardon me. It's the same... It would have been the same. Right?
The bill for Morseburg Plumbing was paid though, was it not?
Yes, it was.
Okay, thank you.
That was billed out by the...
That was $423. So if it had have been done multiple times, it would have been far more than the cost that I'm asking. Again, we did ask for any recovery of financial expenses that we cleaned ourselves. Replacement of insurance... Or, sorry, insulation and poly and stuff that is used in our crawl space. We threw out clothes because I did not want to put sewage waste in my washing machine. We lost food because we had moved out for three weeks. We incurred costs. My parents incurred extra cost having us there. Those are not things that I asked for. I only asked for the NAPs bill to be paid. I have copies here if you want me to provide them now or I can send them to you by email.
Was... What? Did the backup flood your entire basement?
It's at their crawl space, yes, it did.
Okay, so... What do you do with the crawl space?
Everywhere.
So it wasn't...
Not to mention the fumes and the sewer gas. It's fumes that we had to evacuate. We have no idea how long our family was exposed to sewer gas. Our furnace is in the crawl space, so all of the fumes and everything went through our entire house with our duct. Our ductwork needs to be cleaned.
Is there no backup backflow protection?
It's not required.
No, 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 that's not the issue.
At this time, no, it's not. We were looking to replace our line at the same time, but as soon as this happened, we had scheduled for Bex to come and dig. As soon as this happened, they would not return our phone calls.
No, no, no.
So that would be done in the springtime at our cost.
No, I'm going back to 16. 2016. Is there no backup flow protection?
No.
Put on in 2016 in the first backup in the first blockage occurred?
No, because it made sense for... As it does for you, to make sure that everything's done at the same time. If we knew our front yard was going to be dug up at the same time as the street repair, why would we do that at a second time?
No, 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 but the backup rester goes inside the house.
So that's what I'm saying.
Backflow protector.
Right. So we would have to dig up our front lawn,
No, no.
Repair the entire line because the way it goes, it goes under our puddings.
We would have taken the old cast lawn. It's cast... It's old and cast. So we would have taken and put all up to date new poly... Or new ABS and a backflow preventer.
So because we knew that you were going to be repairing the street and digging up partial... Our partial lawn to begin with, we in turn thought that it would be a good idea to make sure that all of the digging was done at the same time, which we intended to do this time. But again, once this happened, all of a sudden Bex started... We refused to return our phone calls. We spoke to the foreman of Cornwall gravel. He said, "Yeah, do it at the same time, that's your best idea." That was two weeks before the backup.
I'm looking at it from a... Excuse me.
Go ahead.
I'm looking at it from a technical point of view. You're trying to understand this. Backup protector. Backflow protector, I think they're called. Are they not inside the house? Are they not installed inside the house? If I can through the chair...
Yes, you are. You are correct.
Through the director of operations. They're not installed inside the house?
No, that is correct.
Okay, so I'm going back now to 2016 when the first problem occurred. So in 2016, the first problem occurred. There was no backflow protection on the line. My understanding is that it looked like the blockage was...
It's in the exact same spot.
Okay, but no matter where the blockage is, it's still your house.
That's right.
So the blockage gets cleared in 2016. But there's no backflow protector put on to protect your house if it happened again.
That's right.
And in 2016, we didn't know that we were going to be doing the street in 2018. No, we didn't. I can tell you that for sure. Because we never made that decision until 2018.
Well, to my understanding, what was told to us at the time was that Walker Street was to repair... Be repaired in the spring of 2016. But you chose to do the east-west instead.
No, no, well, I don't know where that idea came from. But I mean... And I know Walker Street has been a... And I don't mean to be argumentative here, but just to... So that you understand the timelines. The Walker Street project was... How shall I say? It was a project that was on our list for quite some period of time. And... But we did not make the decision to do the project until spring of 18, I think it was. Am I correct about spring of 18 when the decision was finally made?
It would have been in the winter of 17 to spring of 18 now, through that budget cycle.
Okay. I looked at my notes the other day trying to find my... Trying to find my... The decision out... It was made at a public works decision. And at the time that it was made, there was a financing package put together. And I know that that final decision wasn't until late 18 or mid-18. So, anyway, that doesn't get us anyplace. The point is that after the first problem, there was still no backup protection put on. Backflow protection put on. And so now it happens again in 2018.
But I think you... We can agree that as far as timelines go, digging up our front yard and repairing our line as well as putting in a backflow preventer at the same time would make sense for both parties.
Well, the backflow protector...
Is not code.
Is your responsibility.
Absolutely.
If the line's on our property, that's our responsibility. And I understand that. But I look at it from the point of view, if it's my house, I wouldn't really care where the problem was. I would want the backflow protector to protect me.
And I understand that.
So anyway, now we have the situation where it's 2018 and the... This looks like from the briefing note that we have, you called around October the 1st.
We left our home on September 27th.
Okay, but...
Mr. Grant was called on September 28th.
Okay, but now our briefing note says that you called us on October the 1st.
I think there were multiple phone calls made. Morseburg Plumbing then invoiced us on October 1st. That was the day they did the sneaking.
When did it actually happen, what date?
We left our home on September 27th.
That's when...
At 8:00 at night.
So that's when it happened, September 27th, not October 1st?
Yes. That's when we noticed that that's exactly... That wasn't what had happened, was this sewer waste. We didn't move back into our home until after October 10th.
And you called four days later to the township?
No.
Telling you that we had a blockage?
My husband called that evening and then spoke to Mr. Grant on the 28th.
Oh, on the 27th, same day? Did it happen?
28th.
28th, that's the day.
Yep.
Because you left at night, right? You left at 8:00 or whatever.
Yes, and he actually missed three days of work.
So it was... It was September 28th in the morning?
I can get his time sheets from work to prove to you that he was out of work on the September 28th.
Okay, so when was the... There was a period of time there when you weren't in the house. And according to the briefing note that we have, owner called on October the 1st. Owner called indicating another blockage arrangement made with Morseburg Plumbing to attend later that day. Notified around 2:30 PM that blockage was cleared. Camera work performed and a slump in the pipe observed. The location of the slump was marked over land. The owner advised that their insurance company would not cover the cleanup cost despite the owner paying additional sewer backup protection coverage after the first event in 2016. Staff indicated we would advise our insurance company well.
Yeah, our insurance will not cover it because they claim that we're not at fault with the proof that we have from Morseburg Plumbing saying that the blockage is on township property.
Okay, so that's why your insurance won't cover. October 3rd, staff advised the owner... Staff advised the owner that insurance would probably pay the cost. We should proceed with cleanup and keep a record of interactions and invoices. So what date did the actual cleanup get done?
On the Wednesday, which I believe was October 3rd. Sorry, I don't have a calendar.
You were at your house for Thanksgiving, weren't you?
Yes, we were. More than.
Thanksgiving wasn't until much later in the month?
Well, like I said, we had the email from the CIO advising us to go back into our home on October 10th because it was Thanksgiving weekend and we had to go into our crawl space and clean it out ourselves. We weren't comfortable going home. We were... You had very limited usage until we knew that the street was repaired, which took place on October... November 1st is what you indicated in your... On November 1st, the new lateral sewer was installed.
By us?
We actually went, yes. We actually went to my parents' opt-in to use facilities rather than using our own because we didn't trust our own.
So have you got backup for... Backflow protector on there now?
No, because by the time that we got this done, we weren't able to dig.
No, no, the backflow protector goes inside the house.
I understand. But I've also told you that financially, this has caused a burden on us.
No, but without backflow protection, you're just...
And you're ensuring me that these new sewer lines and all of Morseburg Plumbing ensured me that we would be fine until the springtime and so we could get this in.
Well, just hang on one second. We can't provide those kind of insurances because we don't control the weather and we don't control a whole... A whole number of factors that can affect you.
I understand. And if it does happen again and it is something that results from our doing, I would certainly do whatever I need to do to put that backflow preventer in before I'm able. But this is proving that the blockage was on township property. And I'm sorry for getting frustrated, but this is ridiculous.
You didn't put the... You're saying you wanted to dig everything up on your side of the property, change the ABS pipe, is that what you're saying?
That's correct. We were going to... We were going to do this. We had already talked to...
You got cast iron now?
Yes.
Okay.
And the house was built in the 40s.
Yeah, yeah.
Which showed that there was nothing wrong with the pipe both times on our end. So we were going to change it all over and put in the... What's called the backflow prevention all at once. Well, they would... Mr. Beck wouldn't even call us back or talk to us after they found out that we did have a sewer backup. So by the time that they'd already got... By the time that they had already cut down in front of our place, dug it all up, we had no time to get anybody in to dig our section up to replace all the pipe and put the backflow prevention in.
So your backflow... Your goal is to do that this spring, is that right?
That is correct. I'm going to have my brother come down and we are going to dig and replace all the ABS. The cast iron with ABS. And what I've already got one ordered at Home Hardware in Prescott is a backflow preventer.
Like I mentioned, on November 27th, the invoices were not paid by us because Mr. Mayor, you sent me an email on October 30th that said, "I am sure that payment of your invoices will be included in the November check run and approved by council at the November council meeting."
Well, that was on the basis of the information that I had at that period of time.
The information hasn't changed, sir.
Well, we don't... What we don't know is what's causing this. We seem to understand that... We seem to understand that it's on our side of the line, if I can put it that way. And that seems to be... I mean, I don't see anything in the briefing note that we have that indicates that it's not on our side of the line.
The note from Morseburg Plumbing on October 1st says that it's... The cleanup is 75 feet into city sewer. Once unblocked, the camera and sewer located bad spots outside with spray paint and USP was provided. So photos were provided to you of exactly where the blockage was.
I mean, I don't have any contradiction in front of me that says that it was not on our side of the line. That's what led me to believe that we would be... That we would be dealing with this. When Morseburg Plumbing came in and cambered the line, what did they... Did they find a blockage?
Yes.
And did they know what that blockage was?
No. What they actually did is they can't camera first. So they put in 75 feet and found the actual... Felt the blockage and had to auger through it to clean it out. And then once they retracted that, then they put the camera down in. And when they were going in, they found where the blockage had actually occurred in the dip in the pipe, which was slowing the solids down. Once there was enough solids in there, that's when it started to back up, was the dip in the pipe.
We didn't do a camera inspection in February of 2016, did we?
Yes, they did. They did auger and camera and they said...
We did or Morseburg?
Morseburg Plumbing did. And they said that it was in that strip. It was the same 75 feet out was the sway in the pipe.
Same spot?
Exact same spot.
So again, when it happened in February, it was actually Monday, February 22nd. I'd taken the day off work myself. They were... Found out where it was. Unfortunately, there was an impending snowstorm the next day, so they didn't want to dig up the street. Mr. Grant called me and asked if they could come through the house. I did. And then he then told me that all invoices would be directed to that because it was on township property. We didn't receive copies because it was built to you.
In 2016?
Yes.
That's correct. They do have video proof and invoice proof.
In fact, if I remember correctly, the gentleman that came in October of 2018 said I remember being here before.
So, if I may... Sure, sure. So we identified the problem in 2016 through camera and it... And they identif... Morseburg Plumbing identified it as a sway or a dip in the pipe.
That's correct.
The same distance, which was never fixed. And the reason that you were given that it was never fixed was that it was going to be...
Fixed when the street was...
When the street was done. And so then it happened again in 2018. And the reason it wasn't dug up and fixed then was because it was going to get fixed in two more weeks or three weeks.
Which we were fortunate enough that it did happen in time because Cornwall gravel, from what I understand, had asked for an extension. They weren't even going to get to us until this happened.
So... So when it was cambered again this time in October, it was the same distance again and the same sway that caused the backup. And that dip or sway isn't on your property.
That's correct.
It's on township property.
On township, yes, right. Basically, almost in the middle of the street.
So the only thing that is pointed out that you could have done to prevent this is to have actually put a backflow preventer on.
So it would have happened again?
Short of it actually being dug up and it actually would have been repaired. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, through your direction, I'm going to see if I can hear any report on it.
With respect to the events?
Of your opinion of the blockage? What caused it? Were it actually...
Well, certainly no doubt in... We can go back to February of 2016. There was a blockage. And as per the briefing note, typically what it is, is through the building lateral gets cleaned out and you move forward. I understand that the owners say there was camera work done and submitted. I have no... I've checked with our staff and we have no camera work for 2016. So typically on the first event, you wouldn't camera it. I believe that if there was any camera work done, it was cambered before they removed the blockage. There is a note on our occurrence sheet regarding that. So typically what it is, it's cleared out and you move forward because it may be just something that was deposited in the lateral that maybe shouldn't have been or something of that nature. You move forward. If there's a reoccurrence, you typically camera to try to determine if... You know, if there's a bigger problem than simply something, you know, stuck in the line, i.e. a break, anything of that nature. So the first time that staff viewed the video that showed a dip in the pipe was October of this year. Overall, the lateral sewer is in pretty good condition.
But it does have a slump.
There's no doubt that it has a slump. There's probably...
So it's not that good a condition then?
Well, if you... Through the chair, if you're looking at a potentially a sewer that's been in place since the 40s or 50s, it's in pretty good shape. Yes, it is.
Do you have anything else to add?
They would not release the video to me from the original in 2016 due to the fact that I am the house owner, but they automatically build the township direct. So if you're looking for that, they have it on file and they can get it for you.
You're talking Morseburg Plumbing?
Yes, that's correct.
They're not releasing it?
So they didn't give it to you, Dave, on...
No, they wouldn't give it to me.
No, no, I'm talking about they didn't give it to township in February 2016. Is that right?
Through the chair, that is correct. We did not receive that.
But it was done.
Sorry, I was just going to say, Mr. Grant is correct. They did camera the line prior to authoring the blockage in 2016 because I was there with them.
Dave, would it be reasonable if the distances are the same from the house, roughly 75 feet? Is it reasonable to say that the dip would be the cause both times?
I would certainly say that a slump is a contributing factor, but given that two and a half years of usage went by, I would say it's minor in the nature of things.
The slump is a minor cause?
In... Given the time that's went by, two and a half years of usage on that line, given that 2017 was an extremely wet year. So we certainly know that our entire systems were at their limits in the spring of 2017. So if it was significant enough, it would have caused some type of issue at that point, is the theory.
So... Go ahead, that all we're...
We all kind of heard. The... So the dip, the slump, whatever it's called, it is gone now? It has, it was repaired with the Walker Street Repair?
That is correct. There's a new main and lateral to the property.
It's reconnected to their cast that's there and there's no longer an issue with a slump or a dip, correct?
That is correct.
So-
And there's no slump now?
That is correct, to the best of my knowledge.
So you're indicating, in view of the long timeline between the two events, you regard the slump, the so-called slump, as a sort of a possible minor cause. What would you think the major cause would be?
I would not want to try to guess and there's too many variables in that sense.
No, but it's October, so it can't be frost.
I would not anticipate that it would have been anything related to heaving or anything of that nature unless during the construction with the added heavy traffic on there.
If the traffic's not on at all.
The brake is on the edge of the road.
And they were using our street to go back.
So that-
It's on the edge of the road.
It would-
Heather, how long were you out of your house?
Three and a half weeks.
Three and a half weeks, not nine days? I can try to count nine days here.
So we left on September twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh of September, you left?
And we moved back in after October eleventh.
Okay, because I was talking to you Thanksgiving weekend at that candidates meeting, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. I'm sorry, I forgot that you were there as well.
Yeah.
Which I was told.
So October eleventh, you moved back in?
The middle of the week.
On Thursday, October eleventh or at the candidates meeting?
Now, to make it perfectly clear, the amount that you're looking for, I believe, is five hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents.
Plus HST.
Yeah.
Plus HST.
The paid receipt that I have is six thirty-five, sixty-three.
Six thirty-five, sixty-two.
Yeah. They did not charge us any additional interest because of what's going on.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Have they got paid rate as of today?
They were paid on December twelfth.
Okay. By you?
By me. My husband.
Yep.
Okay, we have a recommendation. Are there any more discussion?
I have copies of this.
Okay, if there's nothing further, thank you for coming.
Do you like the copy, please?
Not at the moment. I don't think.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to six A, the lateral sewer, three oh four nine Walker Street.
What happened here?
No, no.
What happened here? You said we were done for it.
No, no. Sorry, I just thought you were finished with the presentation.
My bad.
So we're now on the lateral sewer line on information item six A. We have a recommendation. And the recommendation is that committee does not recommend reimbursing the homeowner for any cost associated with the cleanup. Could I have a mover, please? Before we go there- Sorry, go ahead. I'd like a little bit more time to deal with this. I'm wondering if we can leave this to later in the agenda, skip over some of the earlier items or skip over six A right now and deal with the other items on the agenda in sequence and then possibly come back to six A later in the evening. I just need a little bit of time to get my head around this, if that would be acceptable to the chair and the table. We have a request which you've just heard. Is there any objection to deferring this till later in the evening?
On the course of-
I'll talk that to the committee.
It is. I'm hearing no reason why we should proceed with this at the moment. Is that what I'm hearing?
We will proceed with it tonight.
We will.
As long as we-
Is that correct, Mr. Mayor, that you want to deal with it tonight?
I'd like to think that we can deal with it tonight.
We can deal with it.
It is going to be dealt with tonight, though.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Every one in concurrence, then we'll move it to-
So it's becoming each now?
It'll become each. Okay, moving along, we'll, item six B, Dishaw Street, water main break, two thousand and eighteen, information item. And I believe, Mr. Grant, you're going to deal with that?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to advise committee that we had a water main break on December thirtieth around eleven twenty PM. Our staff responded, isolated the main and had everything repaired approximately six hours later. So the procedure, there's a procedure for emergency or unplanned repairs through the Ministry of Environment and that procedure was followed by staff and we're not fully sure of the cause of the break, but anticipate with all of the weather from plus five to minus thirty stretch that we've had, potentially some heaving that has caused that crack.
Now, Mr., yes, go ahead. So through the chair. Yes. Can you tell us if the age or the condition of the main or the break occurred, roughly what age we're looking at?
I believe that we're looking at early seventies.
Early seventies and the type?
It is cast iron, I believe.
Cast iron. And it's an eight-inch pipe?
It's an eight-inch main.
Oh, you use, you do use a stainless steel clamp then? It's cast iron?
Correct. We use the stainless steel repair clamp.
And I believe this was at approximately the corner of Highway two on Dishaw Street?
That is correct.
Any other questions? Yes.
It says here we're okay because it remained above sixty-five PSI for the Environment Service Public Works. What's that mean? Is there like a rule or law, rule of thumb, or sixty-five PSI is going to be safe?
Through the chair. Typically, system pressure should remain above twenty PSI and that is the ministry standard or potential regulation standard. So the system, it wasn't severe enough to cause any type of system-wide dropage.
And what's the pressure that the ministry goes by?
Should be above twenty PSI.
Above twenty PSI?
Yes.
And it was sixty-five at the time of the break?
It was sixty-five.
So we're well above that, right?
Well above that, correct.
Excuse me, another thing too, the concentration that you use of chlorine in the one point seven four milligram, what is that? That's just to flush out the system, to kill all bacteria, is that what you're saying?
Through the chair, that is the residual chlorine that was in the main after flushing. So typically, the system should have a chlorine residual above zero point zero five and typically you like to be below four milligrams, somewhere in that area.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, that's an information item. We'll just move on. Mr. Chair, before we move on, was there another break today on Dundas Street?
Through the chair, not to my knowledge. There was, we did have a sewer lateral repair that took place on Dundas.
Oh, it was a lateral?
Yep.
Just out of curiosity, was the repair on our side of the line?
Combination of both.
Combination of both?
Yes.
And again, was it a breakage?
In this particular case, it was no code pipe. I'm not sure how many are familiar with the tar paper pipe that was to be be all end all. It's a be all end all for probably about fifty years and then it seems to collapse.
And was that pipe used right from the main to the house, that type?
It was an interesting combination. There were about four different pipe materials.
Four different types going from our side to the house?
Through it, yes.
Oh, my heart.
Yes.
Yes.
So I believe we're down now to two.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, we'll move on and it's now number six C, County Road two east of Cardinal's speed limit. This was brought forward at a notice of motion a few weeks ago and we now have it here. Mr. Grant, are you going to deal with this?
I certainly can, Mr. Chair. Basically, found a sort of a project that City of Hamilton undertook. It's a little dated, back in two thousand and one, but I believe that the key findings out of that consultation process hold true today. And I think there's a balance that needs to be struck between safety and ensuring that motorist mobility and quality of life of residents are not impacted greatly by the speed requirements. So basically, what the findings that we found from our two-week count in November of this year was that actually, speed was the average and actually, the eighty-fifth percentile speed was now lower than the speed spy that the OPP used back in two thousand and sixteen. So basically, eighty-five percent of the vehicles traveling on that stretch were traveling seventy-three kilometers or less. So.
Yes, so Dave, thirteen of twenty-four on the first page are below twenty kilometers an hour. I drive that stretch alone every single day and I'm not sure that I've ever encountered a vehicle that's driving below twenty kilometers an hour. So is it reasonable to think that those were people that live right there pulling into their driveway or pulling out of their driveway? And do those numbers skew the outcome of this overall number in a lower fashion because there's thirteen of twenty-four at such a low number?
Thank you, through the chair. I don't believe so. You're looking at anywhere between ten to fifty kilometers. You would not have a thousand, so it would be like about ten to fifteen percent, those numbers at low. So the bulk of the numbers really start to take effect between fifty and eighty are the main bulk. So I don't see that influencing the eighty-fifth percentile or the average.
So they don't throw out the bottom ten percent and the upper ten percent would work with the middle eighty or something like that?
No.
Through the chair. This report that we've got, the statistics summary report that we've got in front of us, the period was, is that December the eleventh? Or no, it'd be November the twelfth to November the eighteenth, is that correct?
That is correct and I believe it's November nineteenth to the twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, yeah.
Is the second week.
Okay, so my question is, it's westbound on County Road two. Where was the placement of, and maybe in the briefing note I've just forgotten it, where was the placement of the radar at that for those two weeks?
Exact location, I am not one hundred percent sure. I believe it was probably a hundred, a hundred and fifty feet past the curve.
There's a pumping station at the end of the straightaway as you come out of Cardinal going toward New York Park and it was on the two telephone poles towards Cardinal is where it was attached.
So was that the top of the hill?
So it's a bit-
No, it was on the straightaway heading into Cardinal.
I think it's about a hundred and fifty feet probably from that pumping station or the curve.
Yeah, right, west. So before that, I just thought it makes sense for him for the pumping station.
In the sixty zone?
Definitely in the sixty.
In the sixty zone, correct.
And the average is sixty-two, that's what it's saying? Or average is sixty-two clicks?
The average speed is sixty-two clicks.
Yeah. And in both reports too, isn't it?
Both reports are very consistent with respect to average speed and eighty-fifth percentile.
Very consistent. Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to add one piece of information here. So the initial work, statistical work, was sometime prior to that, I think, way back in around about, if I recall correctly, around about election time back in early October. And I believe that you sent me a number of reports that I forwarded to a constituent. I just wanted to report to the table, Mr. Chairman, that as a result of that initial report and some conversations that I had with people, there was some feeling that a lot of the offenders on those initial reports, that some of the offenders were some of the heavy trucks coming into Cardinal. And I sent a little request to the plant manager in Cardinal asking if the transport drivers could be warned of the fact that there are speed limits in and out of the village, both eastbound and westbound, and that if the drivers aren't prepared to adhere to those limits, we'll ask for a heavier police presence. And I'm assured that a warning was issued to all of the drivers coming in and out of the plant. So I'm thinking that that warning may have had an effect on this report that we see in front of us because I do see some reduction here compared to, I believe, compared to the earlier reports that we had from October and September. Or am I misled here? Am I misreading what I'm hearing, what I'm seeing?
No, through the chair. Certainly, there is a reduction from the two thousand and sixteen data that the OPP tabulated. The county data, which is, I believe, what you're referring to from the September timeframe?
I think it was.
It was the county and that setup was done in the eighty just prior to you entering the sixty zone.
Yeah.
And so naturally, the percentile in the average speed is up higher because you're in an eighty zone.
Bad placement.
I believe that the placement was put in there to determine whether there was warrant in extending the zone out further. Wanted to see what, whoops, sorry, what the traffic speed was approaching that sixty zone. So I think it was two different reasons for why it was undertaken.
Question?
Was the first application of the digital sign was on the outside of the eighty or it was just inside the eighty? Because my recollection is that it was somewhere near the Sealy's house at the end of Flat Street, somewhere as you started up the hill. We have the eighty sign right in our front yard and I don't remember it being on the year- the Yerba side of our front yard. I remember it being on the other side. I may be wrong.
So, so through the chair, if, if you were heading west into Cardinal at that time, that, that sign was set up and there's, there's a photo of it where you see the sixty ahead sign in the background. So it was in the eighty zone just prior to entering into that sixty zone.
So the sixty zone, the sixty zone begins right, right at my house, right? So it was on the fire side?
You still, you still have an, you still have an eighty sign there.
There's an eighty, why trim the grass around it? So.
So as you, as you, as you travel further west, you have a sixty ahead sign and then you move into the sixty zone.
Mine's an eighty, mine's an eighty begin sign.
Correct, heading east.
So it doesn't.
It, 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 it doesn't flip.
Drive faster in one, in one side.
It does not flip exactly in the same spot.
Okay. I assumed it did.
Mr. Grant, I, I just have a question for, for clarification. I'm, I'm looking at the statistics summary reports and we'll take the, the first page eleven, twelve, eighteen to eleven eighteen, eighteen. And at the bottom of the page, on the fourth column over percentage of violations, percent, percent violations, am I reading this correctly that on the average fifty-four percent of the traffic that went by was in violation of the speed limit?
Of the posted speed limit, that would be correct. As, as you can tell with the average speed being sixty-two, that would be above sixty and therefore.
Right. And then two more columns over maximum speed. We have a maximum speed average of ninety-five kilometers an hour?
That is correct.
And then if we go to the next page, which is the later, the later timeframe, we have fifty-eight percent on average in violation and ninety-six percent of the maximum speed or ninety, ninety-six kilometers per hour. That, that, to me, that seems rather, rather, rather high and I think that the police could have a field day. Gosh, fifty percent of the traffic that goes by could be ticketable.
Look at some of the speeds that are going up.
I, I, yes, I, I have done that.
Yeah.
Through the, through, through, through the chair. There, there is, there is no doubt that, a, a, as you can see on the second statistic summary report, if you look, counts by speed bin on the right-hand side, you, you have one person that, or one vehicle that traveled between a hundred and fifteen and a hundred and twenty kilometers an hour.
Yes.
Okay. And, and you look at a hundred and five to a hundred and ten, two, nine, seven. What, what that works out to is, is about less than one percent that are point-on-point of very unreasonable drivers. So there, there's no doubt that, and those may be the only ones that the OPP would catch, but to indicate that percentage of violations of fifty-eight percent that they could, they, they could ticket fifty-eight percent of people, if you, if you're going sixty-two in a sixty zone, I, I find, I find it hard to think that the OPP are going to pull you over, issue a ticket because they're, they're not going to win in, in that, in that particular sense, right? There, there's a degree of variance in, in that end of it. Naturally, if you're going eighty-five in a sixty, highly likely that, that would be. But overall, what I, what I would, what I would say is there are about ninety to ninety-five percent of the vehicles traveling along there are using that section of road reasonably. There's, there's, there's a small percentage that are not and I, I'm, I would, I would think that by potentially reducing or putting in a seventy kilometer zone in between the eighty and existing sixty, the, the only thing that would occur is that you would increase your violators.
Yeah, that's right.
Because they're, they're accustomed to driving in an eighty zone and that's what they feel the, it is an eighty zone. By dropping it to seventy, they're going to continue to drive at the.
Until they realize it was a seventy.
I, I don't, I don't, I, there is no indication from the reports from, from, from Hamilton in my discussions in OPP that by putting up a seventy sign that they're all of a sudden going to say, oh, I need to drive seventy. They're going to drive to the road conditions and we all end up, unfortunately, I think we've all had the time when we're driving along a stretch of road and look down and say, oops, I can't believe I'm at that speed.
It doesn't, it doesn't happen, does it?
Well, it has happened to me on occasion.
Through the chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Do the, um, do the, do the devices, I mean, in addition to this very valuable information that we get from the devices themselves, when the devices are in place, they flash your speed as a, as a kind of a warning. Do we have any kind of knowledge that, that indicates that those devices themselves are effective in reminding people what their speeds are and getting them to slow down?
Where they may or they work.
Through, 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 through the chair. I would, I would say for vehicles that don't use that stretch of road regularly, it, it would have an impact the first few times. You see that flashing one and you say, oops. If, if you're, if, if you're using that on a daily basis, you become numb to that sign.
Where they may or no, you don't become numb. I travel three hundred kilometers roughly a day and I see one of them and when they start flashing, man, I hit the brakes. I don't care if I've been up there five times. It does get your attention and you will not cheat. Believe me, I know you will not cheat. I think they're great, especially the ones where you got the smiley face and the ugly face. It's true, it's true. It gets your attention and you do owe me what you owe them there. I'm sorry. I know, it's fun, but it does, it does work.
Through, through the chair. We, in the past, had them installed, if recollection serves me right, on Bridge Street at some point. Did the exact opposite not happen with those? Were people not actually using them as stunt drives, speed limiters? I had heard through the rumor mill that people were trying to see how fast that they could go through town.
Through the chair, I, I am, I am sure that there's a small portion that, that may have very well have used it that way. And through, through the chair also to, to, to Councilor Yelobah's point, I, I, I'm certainly not disagreeing. What, what I, what I would certainly indicate is that, that a two-week period, if that was true, we have, we would typically have the majority of, of people go, using that stretch on a regular basis during week one and week two. If, if, if they, if they were paying attention to that sign more frequently, we should have seen a drop in week two. We, we saw no drop. And that's, that's what, that's, that's what I'm going by. The, the difference is, I would say that your, your driving is reasonable. You, you understand that, right?
Oh, yeah.
You see that and you, and you panic and most, most people do.
Yeah, that's true. It works.
It's, it's, it's fair that probably.
And they're all over the country now.
Probably eighty-five percent of the people will.
Through the chair, go ahead. I think that you made pretty good information gathered for, especially from Hamilton, the fact of stuff. If you really look at the stats here over a week period, you got about four hundred. The police probably went ticketed if they're there. Take it over a seven-day period, we're probably talking about, probably about the same forty-five or fifty drivers that are doing that violation. Probably the same ones every time that are traveling that road that are violating. And we did put a seventy zone on, on the west side of Cardinal. Over the last five years, I've seen very little effect that seventy zone had, had coming into Cardinal because the last couple, so long we went on, but signs up after we didn't, we found very little. We tried to get counties to lower it to sixty there and they agreed finally to put it at seventy at that time we got and, and we didn't see very much difference.
With eighty, seventy, sixty, oncoming east, yeah.
We've seen, seen very little difference when we did our studies afterwards. So I really don't think changing it accomplishes anything.
How long after, but the study's done?
We had them on two or three times. They, they even put them up.
Two, week or two after when they changed it and then off for next year, right?
Yes, I'm trying, I'm trying, I'm trying to recall exactly what year that it actually changed to a seventy, but we did have the speed spy.
Year thirteen.
Thirteen. So we, so we did have, the OPP did do their speed spy in, in that section as well and it was, as it, as it turned out, if I recall correctly, that it was actually higher speed on the, the west side of Cardinal than on the east side of Cardinal, even with that seventy, seventy kilometer stretch out. I'd have to confirm that from, from the data.
Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared to move the recommendation.
Do we have any, any other questions? Mr. Crawford, Mr. Medford, you all done? We do have, we do have a recommendation. The committee does not recommend that council defeat. The road authority having jurisdiction for a traditional, transitional speed limit posting of seventy kilometers per hour zone in between the existing eighty and sixty zones east of Cardinal. We have a mover?
Second.
Second. I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Okay, moving on, we will go to item six D, QMS commitment and endorsement. And I believe, Mr. Grant, you have the privilege of speaking with us.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So as, as one of the recommendations out of the Walkerton Inquiry was that, that water systems should establish a quality management system. And as part, part of that requires the, an accredited operating authority. So the part, and the other part that is required in this is the development of an operational plan that meets the drinking water quality management standard. There are twenty-one elements. In front of you tonight is, is basically element two, the policy statement, and element three, the endorsement and commitment. There are some parts of the, the operational plan that are confidential. They contain information that, that should not be disclosed to the public with, with respect to phone numbers and, and, and other items where we, we would have access to people that, and, and numbers that, that shouldn't be for, for public disclosure. So we have, we have completed a, a full cycle of our accreditation process and we are, we are partway through our, our second full round. This, this upcoming year in, in June will be our survey, our second surveillance audit and then a full scope onsite accreditation will take place in twenty twenty. So naturally, as, as a new council, we're, we're certainly hoping that you will commit to the, to the policy statement, the operational plan and, and endorse it. In, in the coming months, staff will be, will be updating you on basically the twenty-one elements and reviewing some of the, the due diligence that, and responsibilities that come with the, the, the water system and this, this program.
Discussion, Mr. Mayor?
Just speaking briefly and I'm prepared again to move the recommendation. But just speaking briefly, we've had a, a quality management system in place for quite a number of years now. And I can see that the intent here is to get the commitment of the new council behind the policy and the system. But it's been my pleasure actually to participate in the review, the drinking water quality management system review meetings, which take place in each September or October, I believe it is. And I believe in the last four years, it was the mayor and the deputy mayor that attended the meeting, the briefing session with the staff as they went through the twenty-one elements that the director is speaking about. And suffice it to say that during all of those previous meetings, our system that we have in place, our staff is maintaining it to a very high quality. And I'm, as I say, I'm, I'm prepared to move this recommendation. I hope that the council will follow it. And that signals to the regulatory bodies that, that the council is in fact supporting the system in a, in a very tangible manner.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have one.
Go ahead.
The system was submitted, the one there in the page where he submitted it to the MOE in two fifteen to get approved, by two oh nine, and it took two years, two years to get it back to say we're approved. But why wouldn't, why wouldn't someone move on that and say, hey, what's going on?
So through, through the chair, basically, this was the, the first round where everyone in the province was, was submitting their, their operational plans. They're quite, quite extensive and detailed with respect to all of the related documents. So there was a long review process. So it, it's not necessarily surprising that, that it did take that length of time before.
So you're saying the MOE was just backlog because everybody else sent it in?
That, that, that is correct. I believe there was, it was a large backlog.
It just wouldn't take two years again to, to get certified. Like I'd be concerned, I'd be moving on it as quick as possible to, to make sure that MOE knows what we're doing and to get certified.
Typically, for that certification, there is, there's about a, a year or a year and a half where, where it's submitted prior to the, the, the date where the, where the existing one would expire. So.
A year and a half?
Typically for some, for some, some of the program.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair, just one quick question. Is this just for drinking water, what this is about or is it stagnant water, like pools and stuff for that as well?
So through, through the chair, this is strictly for, for potable drinking water systems.
Just looking back through emails from Gordon and Davidson for drinking water seminar to set. Does that sort of tie in exactly with what we're, we're talking about? I think it's Wednesday is the seminar, yes?
Through, through the chair, yes. There is a, yes, there, there is a, there was an opportunity to, to, to attend a seminar this Wednesday, four-hour seminar, which is, is, I believe it's section nineteen. I, I call it the due diligence portion and it's a four-hour seminar explaining the, the council role with respect to performing due diligence as part of the quality management system.
Are those not mandatory sessions?
Yeah, suggested that.
There, it, it, yes, through the chair, it was suggested they, they attend. And in one of the notes, we said that we would, we would look at, at hosting one in, in an evening for, for the entire committee at, at, at a later date.
Go ahead. So was there anybody signed up for the Wednesday one?
Through the chair, not, not to my knowledge and it may be a little bit too tight of a timeframe right now to get that submission into the, into the Walkerton Clean Water Center for Wednesday.
Where, where's being hosted? Smith Falls?
Smith Falls.
Oh, okay.
Through the chair, Operation, once you take that, they give you a certificate, you don't have to take it again.
They do, they, they.
Last time is on, they give you a certificate. They hadn't said you'd taken it. Last time is on, they give you a certificate, they hadn't said you'd taken it, so.
Yes, there is, there is a certificate that, that is issued.
They don't actually update it, will they?
We, 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 we would highly recommend a, a refresher be, be taken, but there's probably no mandatory requirement with that certificate that you, that you already have.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a, we have a recommendation. I'm not going to read it, you've all, you've all read it. Do we have a mover?
Yes.
Nurse O, secondary. Mr. Dilma. Counselor Dilma. Okay, then call the question. All in favor? Carried. Moving on, six E. And it is smoking bylaw, the smoking policy, municipal smoking policy. And I believe Rebecca is going to speak to this.
Okay, so basically, we've had a smoking bylaw in place in past years. We updated it in two thousand seventeen to make smoke-free areas, more expanding of the park areas for safety of children. But with the changes of the federal regulations and the Federal Cannabis Act of two thousand eighteen, October, made cannabis legal. So we are basically updating our policies in the smoke-free areas to include cannabis.
Questions? Discussion, go ahead.
So through the chair, and my apologies, I just have a question with regard to the actual bylaw itself. And my apologies, I didn't get a chance to call today to see what the correction might be. But I'm looking at the policy, one, two, three, four, five, six. The sixth whereas clause does not appear to be a complete, a complete clause. There seems to be a break there someplace.
I think the word regular should be regulate.
Oh, regulate. Oh, that makes sense.
That's after the word and?
Yeah, regulate with respect to, that's section one, two, nine, eh? Yeah.
Yes. The, the new bylaw mentions an awful lot of, of green space. Now, I didn't see the original bylaw, which is two thousand seven dash forty-nine. I, I didn't see that. Is the word green space in, in that bylaw as well? Are there any major changes from the old bylaw to the new bylaw?
No, just with, excuse me, through the chair, the only change is to add cannabis.
Yep, but, but if I may, Mr. Chair, and the, and the deputy clerk already spoke to it, but, and I, I know personally for myself, I was very impressed when we had a, a delegation of rather young people come to make a presentation to us about getting smoking away from our parks, because our other bylaws, I don't think included parks. And the delegation, I think the kids were all probably in that eight to twelve to thirteen-year-old. And they made a very impressive delegation and very impressed, impressed the council enough to change the bylaw.
Any other questions?
Through the chair, I have one. I'd like to see, under the new bylaw, where it reads every building structure, parks, sports areas, etc., green space. I would like to see if we could add including street fairs, festivals, and parade routes.
Interesting.
Street fairs, festivals, and parade routes. Because I can see it happening, having Labor Day weekend parade and someone's going to be puffing on that in a crowd of older people or younger grandchildren.
You're talking about banning smoking and?
Sorry?
You're talking about everything in general, not just, not just?
Cigarettes and, cigarettes and cannabis, yeah.
Problem is, we, through the chair, our, our, our authority only extends to our facilities. So, street fairs.
Festivals.
Festivals and parade routes. Are we getting outside our, our jurisdiction of ownership?
I don't think we are.
Well, we don't own county road.
Oh, but we own Dundas Street.
No, that's a county, part of that's a county road. East, the west portion.
Well, whatever.
Through the chair, I can see where you're coming from, but I just don't know how we'd ever enforce it. Because all they have to do, all the parade routes, all, all, somebody comes along, all they got to do is step back in somebody's door yard and then you're.
On private property.
Yeah.
Well, that's fine. It's a lot better than a crowd.
I don't mind it being in there. I just don't see any point to how, how it would ever be enforced, so.
Interesting, interesting, interesting extension.
See, municipal facility, it, it's quite detailed in what it covers. And virtually any municipal land is virtually covered in this.
Which we own.
The biggest thing I'm, I'm worried about is the parades, in Spencible Fair and in Labor Day, period, really. With the word it, we must have taken all that.
And most of those parades are on county roads.
Through the chair, how do you police that? Mr. Mayor, how do you police that?
Sorry?
How do you police it? I do parade routes.
Well, that's why we've got bylaw officers and we have ten thousand dollars that we buy signs with.
Interesting. We're going to have an interesting discussion here coming up because we're going to be.
Can we put that on to the next meeting?
Which, this, your suggestion?
Yes. And do a little legwork, see how we can police it, or if it's possible?
I would, I would be prepared to, to move the rec, to move the recommendation and ask for a staff report as to whether or not we were, we would be able to extend in the manner in which you suggest, but it just seems to me, but anyway, I'm more, more than prepared to, to see what staff has to say about extending to those three, if you name. I'd like to get this passed now.
Yeah.
You can always amend it.
We can amend it, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other, any other discussion? We do have a recommendation. The recommendation is that committee recommends that council adopt the municipal smoking policy as attached. Should we say as attached and/or amended?
Well, say as attached. Then.
Prepared to move it.
Go move it.
All seconded.
And we have a mover and a secondary, Counselor Hunter and Counselor Dish, Dish.
I answered both.
Sorry, no, I, I, I said, I got to go. But I did.
Okay.
Captain, you didn't have a J for your name.
Going to, going to call the question. All in favor? Carried.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just to clarify for staff, is it the committee's well done that we should prepare a report with respect to Counselor Dish, or Counselor Dilma's suggested amendment?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I missed that.
I just would like to get firm direction from the entire committee that council, that staff should invest some time in a staff report to respond to Counselor Dilma's suggestion.
Yes. Should we do that?
I'm sorry? I think it is. I think it's very important.
All right, all, all, all requests are reported.
Is that all you need?
I'm not hearing consensus. I'm hearing two folks at the end here suggesting we should do that.
Okay, I, I would, I would concur myself. I think, Mr. Crawford, you're in agreement?
Yeah.
I believe that carries. It's carried.
I'll put fifty-five percent on that.
Can you make sure the members reflect that?
All right, moving on, we'll go to six, six F. Maintenance request, Shute, Shute Branch of JRDR Municipal Drain. And I believe, Mr. Grant, you can speak to this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The recommendation in front of you tonight is that council, recommend that council approve maintenance work on the Scutton Branch of the James Riley-Dewitt Richter Municipal Drain as recommended by the Drainage Superintendent. And that letter is attached. Also attached is a, sort of a procedure that, that the Drainage Superintendent should follow with respect to, to drainage requests. Just, just to give council a little bit of background, that the Drainage Act requires the township to be responsible for repairing and maintaining the municipal drain. So it's usually defined as a drainage works under the, under the Drainage Act. And that's done through its appointment of the Drainage Superintendent, which we have Mr. Kevin Hawley from the Greer-Galloway Group as our Drainage Superintendent. Requested before you, and I'll, I'll attempt to answer any questions you may have on, on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Any, any, any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I'm, I'm drain weary and drain wary, especially as it comes to the JRDR drain. So I would be prepared to move the recommendation slightly amended, if I may. And I'm relying on the letter that we have in our possession dated January fourth from Greer-Galloway. And in that letter that we have in front of us, on the third, second paragraph of the letter, we have the sentence. Two sentences, actually, that are key to me. "The Shute Branch was not maintained during the previous cleanout of the Dewitt-Richter and the James Riley Municipal Drains. Upon review of the existing engineer's report, Greer-Galloway recommends that the existing report on file is sufficient to be used to complete the requested maintenance." And to me, that's key because we're not going to do any work on these drains without engineers' reports, if we've learned anything in the past four years. So I would be prepared to move the recommendation, provided that the recommendation was written this way. That committee recommends that council approve maintenance work on the Shute Branch of the JRDR Municipal Drain, comma, "using the existing engineer's report, comma, as recommended by the Drainage Superintendent." I want it very clear that we're relying on an engineer's report.
Through the chair. Excuse me, I agree with the mayor there. Just one thing I'd like to make quite clear when we're going to do this, that once they start, we're not going to come back with, I'm saying, oh, well, now we're in it, we need this re-engineered because this has happened before. After farmers have asked, all they wanted is to clean up to the standards that were there. And all of a sudden, we ended up, as farmers, with a million-dollar engineer's report that was, in my opinion, very folly, report that they did, because we've had all kinds of trouble with that report since it was done. We, as farmers, ended up paying for it. So I'd like to make it quite clear that we're issuing this that it's being strictly maintenance, not re-engineering.
Is that, that amendment all right? Any other, any other discussion?
Just question.
Question.
The last engineer report on that, was it two thousand and nine or prior to two thousand and nine? Does it go back that long?
Through, through, through the chair, it, it is substantially older than, than two thousand and nine. It's probably a seventies report.
Yeah, but then they re-engineered it there. When they did the cleaning the last time in two thousand and eight, nine, they didn't order engineering work on it. But they changed the structure of the.
It, it's, it's.
Rad degree. That's where we've had all the problem with, over the sand, washing up, and the culch change direction and stuff on it.
Correct, through, through the chair, there, in two thousand and nine, there was work done on, on the James Riley-Dewitt Richter, but not any upgrading or, or any kind of maintenance done on that Scutton Branch which feeds into it.
Nothing on that branch.
That, that, that's correct. So this particular branch has its own original engineer report, which is.
Back when we did the northwest branch, branches out of that ditch, we didn't clean this branch. And it was done in twenty, twenty twelve. We did up through.
Two, two thousand and eleven and twenty twelve would have been, would have been the time for that.
That didn't quite require it. Now they cleared all that land up through there. They wanted drains, so.
So again, just, just for my own clarification, just requested maintenance would just mean that a cleanup, a cleanout of, of the area, but nothing that, that really requires a change to that existing report or anything like that, just basically a cleanout.
So, so through, through the chair, correct. So, so contained within the engineer's report is, is, is basically your, your blueprint of how the ditch was designed, the parameters, and, and basically this would just be a cleanout to bring it back to its original slopes and.
Following exactly what the original one was?
Correct.
And, and none of the other changes that have happened since then, this would impact them in, in some way that isn't foreseeable? Or they've taken that into account, I suppose?
So through the, through the chair, the, the original, the, sorry, the engineer's report completed in two thousand and nine would, would have taken the, the flows from that branch into consideration as, as part of that design. I, I believe, I wasn't involved in it at the time, but I believe that originally the Scutton Branch was potentially going to be looked at, but it, it was not.
Farmers withdrew the request to have a cleanup.
Okay, so, but there was, but through the chair, there wasn't a request at that time?
They not got it, but they, they didn't. I'm sure Larry said it was draining fine for what they had at the time, but now of course that land's all been changed hands and cleared and they want to tile it, so it's filled up with foot, foot and house.
Any other questions? Mr. Mayor?
Okay, so upon council approving this maintenance work, this goes to tender. I, I'm asking question, it goes to tender. The beneficiaries of the drain are notified that the maintenance work is going to take place. And the, and the approximate cost to each of the beneficiaries. Is that the process that I'm seeing on this flow chart that I've got in front of me?
So through, through the chair, yeah. So the next steps with, with, with approval of council will, will be to get a, a rough cost estimate of what that, what that maintenance work would, would cost. It would be transferred onto the existing assessment schedule. And what we would be doing is sending that in with that notice to the property owners. That maintenance has been requested and approved, and this is the, the estimated cost. that maintenance has been requested and approved, and this is the estimated cost, and this would be your portion upon completion.
Does that trigger a public meeting, or a meeting of the beneficiaries?
It does not. It is not required in a simple maintenance and repair portion of the drain. It's, we're required to maintain it, we maintain it, and basically bill out the cost as per that assessment schedule.
So it doesn't trigger a meeting?
That is correct. In reality, although the process does indicate notifying the property owners, within the act itself, there is no mandatory requirement to actually notify the property owners. However, I think it is a good practice to get in to advise in advance, instead of surprise in the end.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? We have the recommendation amended twice, I believe. I'll call the question. All in favor of the amendments and the recommendation?
Mr. Chair, I don't believe we had a secondor for the amended.
I'm sorry, did we have a secondor? Counselor Hunter? Sorry about that. I'll call the question again. All in favor? Opposed? Now, this brings us to item six G, no parking signage, County Road 21. And I believe, Deborah, you're going to speak for this?
Certainly. We have noticed a significant issue with parking problems during auctions at Marshall's Auction House, out on County Road 21, ever since the auction house was built in 2012. We've tried several different ways to get that under control. We've installed some auction house ahead signage to try to warn people about it. Unfortunately, we continue to see people parking on both sides of County Road 21. A particular concern is parking on the north side of County Road 21, and pedestrians crossing two lanes of traffic to get to the auction house. It's a very dangerous area. There's a slight hill and a slight curve from both directions before you hit that area. And in addition to our own concerns, we've had concerns expressed by the neighbors that there's going to be a tragedy at that location at some point, with a child or a young person running out from between parked vehicles and not being seen by incoming traffic. We have worked with the owner of the auction house to try to come up with some better ways of dealing with it. I, you know, I attend auctions myself, and I know that they, when you go to something like that, the impulse is to park immediately behind the last car you see, so that you don't have to drive past it and look for parking. So even though there is parking sometimes available within, it's people still park on the road. So if we can at least get them to not park on the north side of the road, hopefully that will help them, help
You're the chair?
Avoid a problem.
Thank you.
One other item that's been brought to my attention is from our fire department. Great concerns that on the north side especially, that's the exit going west to any fires. And it's a very dangerous situation with the fire trucks there, those cars on that north side of the road. You say not only kids, but some of them get out too far, and if there's a car coming the other way, fire trucks would have a hard time exiting at any quality of speed to get to a fire up through there. So they were quite, some of them were quite concerned.
Were there, through the SIP money, was there an expansion to the parking lot?
And
That hasn't worked, or?
And additional, the CIP grant was for additional gravel material put down to expand the parking area and make it more attractive, I guess, for people attending the auctions. But unfortunately, what we found is that the auctioneer has now started to put some items for sale on that nicely traveled area. Which, in his last site plant control agreement, we've tried to protect that area for parking, but we haven't had much success or much cooperation.
So we paid to expand his display area?
Display area, yeah.
Where's the chair? Have we talked to him?
Oh, yes.
Hundred times, eh?
Yes, sir.
And very little cooperation? And no cooperation? I always thought he was a pretty decent guy.
He's a very nice man. Just doesn't think he has parking problems.
Well, he's got a parking problem. He's got a bad problem. No, he doesn't.
No, he doesn't.
The only thing directly to the north of it is a field and a house to the one end, and maybe a house further down the other end, but it's really just a field, so.
Yeah, there's just one residence, and one residential entrance in that.
Now, what's our plan, to put signs up? And no parking?
That's right.
At any time?
That's right.
And if they park?
Bylaw officer.
Bylaw officer? Towed away at the owner's expense?
Well, we follow the process, which includes going out, putting notices on windshield, going back out, issuing tickets.
But obviously, if he's not helping us now, he's just going to lead us down the path, and so we're going to have our bylaw officers continue putting on paper, continue putting on little notices.
Well
But if we had Wilson's towing there?
The hope is that the clients will realize that they're not permitted to park on that side of the road and find a different way to access it.
I don't think so, though, if you talk to him that many times. I don't think he really cares.
The intent was a no parking zone and potentially getting to the point of towing, although I can't imagine how we'd ever do that, but
No.
Would be that it's not the auction house owner who is affected directly, but it is his clientele who's affected, who then maybe won't go to his auctions. So I think that's in his best interest, to make sure that his clients are
So in reading that it's a thirty-dollar ticket made payable to the township? Is there, so that seems like a good beginning, as long as that works. But, you know, seeing it's been expressed, is there any way that that can be declared, like a fire access, or something like that? Can't be a fire lane, or anything that increases the fine? It basically, that's the most we can do, is have John go along and give out fifty, thirty-dollar card?
Yeah.
Well, that's good enough.
I can't wait to see the results of the first one.
Pardon?
Can't wait to see the results of the first one.
No, I know. I mean, we should try to work with the guys. He is going to lose customers, or people aren't going to
But we've been down that road for
No, I know, I know, I realize that. You know, maybe this thirty dollars will wake them up to say, hey, guys, I'm sorry, you can't park on that side of the road.
Mr. Mayor, you hear something?
You've got a mic there. Well, what I'm wondering about is page one of the briefing note. County Road 21 is under the jurisdiction of the United Counties. However, they do not enforce parking restrictions, which is true, we don't. Counties doesn't. If a lower tier municipality wishes to designate a no parking area on a county road, which is what we're talking about, council must pass a resolution to that effect, that's us. Council's resolution is then forwarded to the counties with a request that county's council consider a bylaw to establish the no parking area. What worries me is the length of time it'll get counties, that it will take counties to act on our request. So a couple of questions for staff. When we forward the council resolution to the county and ask for the county bylaw, can we provide them, please, with a draft bylaw? Because they they just don't have such bylaws.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, if I may respond to that, you're absolutely correct. In past years, what we've been able to do is pass the designate the no parking area, put the signs up with their permission, and that's all that was ever required. However, the new director of operations at the counties is of a different stripe and prefers to have a bylaw in place to allow that no parking zone to be put in place, as opposed to just a council resolution. And so it's Arup Mukherjee who has requested this council resolution. It's a new process to me as well. Certainly, if it will help, we will provide a draft bylaw, but we have been in touch with county's director of operations several times over this matter, so he won't be surprised to see it.
Surprised is one thing, action's another.
So going back to the thought of ticketing on this, then, is, so if our bylaw officer's going out and issuing a ticket, is he issuing it for our township, or would he be issuing it for counties?
No, it would be for our township.
We're good for cash. Well, that's all I was worried about.
And my question would be, how is he going to go, is he going to go out on his own to monitor this, or is it going to be complaint-driven situation?
Mr. Crawford does both. He does go out on his own, and he does also act on complaints, so it just depends what happens first.
Well, I know what I'd like to see happen, get the signs up, and the first Saturday, the first day that there's an auction, I'd like to have him standing right there, ticketing every single car on the north side of the road. Got to get the message across quickly. I'm not going to be at that auction. I go to the part earlier, I guess I'll be looking for another spot.
North side sucks.
Do we have any more discussion before we call the question?
Good news is
Do I have a mover for the recommendation? Counselor Dylan?
Yeah, let the word move.
And a secondor? Mr. Crawford seconds the motion. And you've read the recommendation. I'm going to call the question. All in favor? It's carried?
Yeah, I think so.
Just before, we're now down to our item A, which is now item H on the lateral drain. I know there's some fidgety people around the council table. Would it be possible to take a five-minute break before we deal with this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Put it back, we'll carry on with the meeting. We are now on the six H, the sewer lateral, and we've had considerable discussion about this. And there is a recommendation that committee does not recommend reimbursement, reimbursing the homeowner for any costs associated with the property cleanup. Any further discussion, just while we're, before we call the question?
Can I make a comment?
You can.
Just personal observation. I'm thinking about this. The first incident happened in 2016. Township realized it was a problem on our side, and they paid the bill, and they cleared the sewer, like tract in the same time. That's what happened.
And we were supposed to come and fix it?
Yes. If this went to small claims court, two years is too long a time for somebody to do something to fix them. And to be very honest with you, I think we'd lose. And the reason I tell you that is I looked after sewers for the municipality, and I repaired one hundred and sixty-six of them in five and a half years. I know a little bit, but that kind of thing would happen.
Any further discussion?
So what are you saying?
What I'm saying is we should pay the bill.
Questions, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Counselor.
Before we move a new motion or anything else, we have to deal with the one that's in front of us first. We don't, so we could put up
This is just a recommendation.
If I may, through the chair, it's a staff recommendation. Committee is quite welcome to put any motion on the table that they choose to.
Counselor?
I make a motion that would pay these people five hundred and seventy-four dollars and some cents, plus H S T, five eighty-two fifty, plus H S T, plus taxes.
Do we have a secondor for that motion? We do?
Can we have a discussion about the motion before we go?
Just a moment. Yes, it's, Mr. Crawford is the secondor. Discussion?
Well, I'm in agreement with that. The discussion, or it seems, the worry is that the lack of a backflow prevention device. I think Mr. and Mrs. Abrams were quite willing to put one on in the spring, once they can dig up their old line. I don't think that it's unreasonable, or maybe it is, but, you know, a hundred percent behind the fact that we pay for this, I think it's our responsibility. I would like to see the backflow prevention device, seems like a reasonable thing to ask, and once that's been installed, then the township pays that fee, so if that could be written into the motion, I support it either way, but I'd like to see that
Do you want to defer payment until the backflow?
I'd like, excuse me, I'd like to see that
I think with the emotion we've seen here tonight, I think that's
I support it either way, so, a hundred percent. I support, through the chair, I support what Tori said, but I don't think we should defer payment of what's outstanding. I think that should be paid, and then it's paid when the rest of the work is done, and that'd be paid at that time.
Sorry, thanks. Just need clarification from the speaker. Just repeat, I'm just trying to understand what you're saying.
So right now, there's an outstanding bill of five hundred and eighty-two fifty? I don't think that should be deferred until the rest of the work is done? That should be paid now, and when the rest of the work is done, then the remainder be paid at that time.
There is no
There's nothing left.
There is nothing
I thought you were saying that I only offered it, I only offered that forward as if, if there were people against, that maybe it would bring us all together. Oh, okay.
Chair?
Counselor? I agree with paying it, and I don't really think we need to defer it. I think these people have said they're already ordered to have backflow. I think we need to request it, that we give them till July first, 2019, to give us notification that they've got a copy of the receipt that the work's been done.
Would that be fair?
Fair enough.
Okay, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, so I'm prepared to go along with the motion to make the payment, but what's concerning me is the period of time between now, when we pay it, and the time the backflow preventer is installed. And I guess my position is that, fair enough, we recognize the bill, we pay it, but if something happens in March, our hands are clean, completely.
And I think you understand that? Fair enough, like So yes, I think we all agree that our hands are clean if it happens tomorrow. Our hands are clean on that. We are paying the five eighty-two in October.
Supposedly what caused the problem has been correct. Our new line's in, so.
Well, Madam C A O, I'm rather confused. How should this, how
No, you've got a motion on the table.
Yes.
You've got a motion on the table that we pay the six thirty-five sixty-two.
That was my question, okay. The motion is on the table. Do we have a
You got a secondor?
And a secondor?
I second it.
We do? I'll call the question. All in favor? Aye. That leads us to number seven, council inquiries, notice of motion. Are there any? Do I hear any?
You guys can leave if you like.
No. Did you need a copy of the invoice?
Yeah, I'll get that from my next
Thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, this is my first one.
It's okay.
It's not your first rodeo.
It's not, no.
Don't feel bad.
Don't feel bad, that's how I talk to them.
You realize, you realize you're on camera, though, right?
I do, I do. That's okay, okay. All right, number seven, council inquiries and notice, notices of motion, do I hear any?
I have an inquiry, now that, uh, we've discussed, uh, parking tonight, uh, during my campaigning, and I imagine some of the rest of your campaigns around Spenceville heard it quite loud and clear, are, we need some parking regulations on our couple of streets, it's Spenceville, one leading from Center Street down through to the, the mill, I forget the name of that street, I've not written names anyway, but, uh, when there's events going on at the mill and Fair Day and stuff, they park on both sides of that street going down there, and if there was ever a fire, the houses burned down because there's no way to get down that street, vehicles parked on both sides, with a car hurt, they let alone a fire truck down through, and, uh, Black Street, uh, what's that, David?
David.
David, it's the same, they park on both sides of the street, all the way up through there, and you can't get up through there when they're parking both sides of the street. I would suggest that they're...
Well, you can, but you wanna have a Volkswagen.
No. I would suggest, just, uh, I'd, I would suggest David Street, there'd be no park, parking on the north side, and, uh, that, uh, other street, there'd be no parking on the east side, or down, because sidewalks are on the other side, so... Loud and clear, it means a lot of the people on the streets during the campaign, uh, they hope they never had a fire, so...
Would you want that brought forward at the next month of the first meeting?
Well, I'd get this out, I'm gonna look at it whenever they feel that they have official information to bring it forward, so...
Um, if I may, through the chair, typically that would be a bylaw enforcement issue dealt with that, in finance rather than public works, so, probably like where you'll find it.
Mine probably has absolutely nothing to do with public works either. Um, however, uh, it's a chance to ask it, I, I was doing my, my daily Facebook reading today and, and noticed that we implemented a Clean Yards, uh, uh, letter, uh, to, um, Nikki Adams for removal of a, a couple of vehicles from the property. Um, how, how, again, it, it may not be the appropriate time, but, uh, it was something I saw today, and I didn't really wanna wait while we're, while we're here, um, it's probably our C B C, but, how, how do we pick one person to, uh, use a Clean Yards bylaw on Blair Road, uh, when there's so many places, uh, inside, inside the actual villages that, that could be chosen? So, my inquiry would be, why does John target one house on Blair Road?
Oh, if I may, through the chair, John Buffett does not target just one house on Blair Road, but he certainly responds to repeated complaints.
So it's a, it, it would be more of a, of a, that specific one would be more of a complaint-driven, not a, not a township-driven?
If I may, Counselor, it's really, um, we have no gallery or press here, but it's really inappropriate to speak about specific bylaw enforcement cases in an open public meeting. I would prefer, and I'd be happy to have that conversation with you.
Okay.
Any others?
I, I, I don't know whether it's the right place to bring it up, but I, uh, I'm gonna bring it up. Not as a notice of motion, but I'm gonna ask the staff if they would, uh, and I'm, and I'm hoping I'm gonna get consensus here, if they would, uh, reexamine the concept of an adverse weather event. And what I'm referring to was the adverse weather event that we declared a few weeks ago, uh, when there was an anticipation that we would have some ice rain event, and the whole legislation, which gives us the authority to declare an adverse weather event, uh, was designed, uh, as I understand it, to provide us with some relief from our minimum maintenance standards, so that when we declare an adverse weather event, we've got a window in which our streets and sidewalks are deemed to be under a state of repair, which should relieve the burden, uh, that, that rests on us to maintain our, uh, streets and sidewalks to a certain minimum standard. Now, that, the declaration, that declaration has not been tested in court, so we don't know whether it'll work or it won't work. But my worry is that if we declare it too often, it won't work, and in the particular case that we used it in the last time, it turned out that we really didn't even need to use it because the event never occurred. Now, I know the C A O is gonna say, but we thought it would.
No, why not, actually? But if I may, Mr. Mayor, we do have a checklist.
Yeah.
And it requires that we hit yes on more than one item, so not only did we have bad weather, uh, approaching, but we also were short-staffed, because we have one operator off right now. And so it was a combination of factors that led to the, the use of that declaration, and it wasn't done lightly, I can tell you that the road superintendent sweated bullets before he made that declaration. It, it, it really does take a number of factors together before a declaration is made, it's not just based on the weather forecast.
Okay, but I'm gonna come back with the counterpart to the argument, I don't wanna be argumentative, but, uh, but just a, a different look on things. Now, I, I don't think we're in the same position as, as for example, the school board, which has to make a decision whether or not to run buses. We're not in that kind of a position, because theoretically, we could declare that adverse weather event twelve hours after the event has actually struck. In other words, our, the event happens, the snowfall comes or the ice rain comes, we do our very level best, the guys finish their shift, and we know we're not gonna be able to get a shift back out on the roads, declare it at that point, and give ourselves another fifteen hours or a fifteen-hour window, and all I'm saying is, we don't necessarily have to declare in advance, we gain the same effect, uh, by declaring when we know we can't meet the requirements of getting the guys out on the streets, that's all I'm trying to make, is can we look at it from that point of view? And I see, Mr. Chairman, that both the C A O and the, and the Director of Operations would like to engage.
They're rolling it forward.
Mr. Grant, do you have a comment or...
Do you want to go first? So, so, so the particular event in, in question, uh, we, we did receive ice rain, it was, it was below zero at that time, um, all of our gravel roads were a bottle.
Were what?
Were a bottle of ice or glass, whatever.
Couldn't stand up.
All, all gravel roads were, at that time. Uh, the anticipated forecast moving forward was not to reach above zero in, in, in any immediate timeframe. Our forces were deployed, we had applied, and we knew that there was no way that we would have tho, the majority of those gravel roads back to a safe state in a reasonable timeframe, so for the protection of the citizens, it was, it was issued, and there is no intent for us to, to look at it, issuing it as a, as a delay in us performing our duties. What we wanna do is, if, if, if the right events occur and we're not going to be able to meet our timeframe, then we want to at least advise the citizens that we may not be at that minimum maintenance standard, so you choose on your own if you wanna go out and go down those roads and, and, and do your activities. I, I think it was a wise decision, yes, in hindsight, there's no doubt, the temperature raised up quick and the paved roads were, uh, I, I'm quite sure everybody was like, I don't know what the heck they were thinking. I, 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 I get that on, on, on the surface roads, but the, but the gravel roads were days before they were what I would consider in, in, in good shape.
So, so, Mr. Chair, if I may, this is new information for me, and, and I apologize for making an issue of non-exist.
Yeah.
But, but point taken, we, we don't, we do not wanna issue that, um, frequently, because then it gets to a point where nobody pays attention.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Fair enough.
And that was the only time we've had it, eh? The first one? Because, I thought I missed one, because you're right, uh, Mr. Grant, it's, every back road in our township was like a bottle, and it, a gravel road was like a bottle, so...
Counselor, I agree with you.
That was a good call.
Chair, now that this was brought up, we, uh, have two graders, and, uh, I understand the, the last council had declared one grader is surplus, I think that was a bad decision because both those graders were working for two days, scarifying, getting those roads back into shape, and for all the money that second grader, that we're gonna get, sell that grader to keep it, and, and it works fine, it runs fine, the motor's good in it and everything, and a little bit of maintenance, it's gonna take, keep that grader sitting down there in the yard, and be able to go out and scarify these roads, I think we're certainly even considering getting rid of it, so...
It's one step forward, two steps backward.
I know you're looking at, we don't need two graders to grade with, we don't need two graders to grade with, and, and double-surface treatment roads, you're cutting down, but it comes to the time, you still need those graders, that grader back up to scarify, because you remember, Mr. Mayor, five years ago, when we got that ice rain, we should, we even scarified the pavement, roads get it broken off, because they've got ice and it turned, turned snap and cold, the salt didn't work, and we even scarified the, the pavements to get the ice broke off that they're halfway safe, safe to travel on, so...
You're right, maybe we forgot all its scarification.
Now, do we have anything else? Okay, that leads us into, I'm sorry?
Oh, are we still on inquiries, or?
Yep, we are.
I just, uh, I'd like to know what's going on at seven thirty, receivership, anything?
I have no further, I have no further information.
I was in there, uh, to the chair, I was in on, uh, Friday, and spoke to the chap that's gonna be running the fuel concession, um, Major Dillon and his partner, uh, were putting, had just gone to Brockville to pick up the last parts or pieces or whatever it was that they needed to get their internal mechanisms working, and then, uh, they were to be, they were to notify the T S S A, uh, I believe that's the Standards Association. The Standards Association will then schedule a visit, and once they certify that, that the, um, pumping and distribution system meets their standard, they'll be open and ready for business, which he, the chap that I spoke to felt that it would happen this week, but this is about the fourteenth time that I've heard it's gonna happen this week.
T S S A does what they wanna do to, and when they wanna do it, yeah, yeah. Don't you worry. So we have heard nothing on, uh, receivership?
Nothing.
Well, the receivership is seven.
The tax portion is, but not...
Oh, the ta, oh, the money?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, we haven't heard a thing.
Uh, I'm gonna go first, to say we, no, we haven't heard a thing. We, we got the money for the taxes before Christmas and, uh, we still are waiting for, uh, the outcome of the insurance company's offer and counteroffer and counter, counteroffer.
Are there discussions?
I'll follow up with Karen tomorrow.
Sorry, I missed the point of question, my fault.
Can we, uh, move on? Was that part of the mayor's report? Can we move to number eight, the mayor's report?
The mayor has nothing to report.
We didn't have warden, and it appears there's no one to ask any questions unless there's other questions involved. No close session tonight?
Oh, I think we should stay for another hour.
Could I have, could I have a, could I have a mover for adjournment, please? Moved by Counselor DeChamp, seconded by, uh, Mr. Packwood? Do we have a adjournment?